...grieving and continue that the loved ones that have been killed, our hearts and prayers tonight are with them. Our part in that is that you will console and comfort them and help them to find the strength to carry on despite being sorry. We know that dealing with the death of a loved one is never easy, and may your grace and love be upon each who are going through such tragedies at this time. Father, we ask your blessing and guidance upon us and counsel as we conduct the business here of our community, and may our actions benefit our citizens and may they please interview us in Christ's name and prayer.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ So that was put together by some people that work on our campus, and we appreciate everything that everyone has done to help us put this together. And so our main thing is bringing tourists into Harriman in Rome County and providing more opportunities and have more fun things to do here. We'd like to thank the city for letting us do this, and then we had sponsors with the Baymont Inn. They had discounted rooms for people that wanted to come. Anytime Fitness lets people have showers there for our campers. Rome County News was one of our sponsors, so was Rome Tourism, so have a lot of people helping us. And of course, our investors who noticed the money to be able to start this. So the results were, we increased our attendance, and people came from 22 states and from 45 counties in Tennessee, so it's almost half the state. And now we're working on our Pirate Fest, not too much time in between. And so our Pirate Fest is the middle two weekends in October, and we've already cast the show. And one fun thing that we've started doing is going to places where other people like this sort of thing, and Fanboy is a convention in Knoxville where people like to dress up, and they have movie stars. And there was a movie star there, Carrie Elwes, and he was a star in Princess Bride and also in Robin Hood. And so he gave a shout out to Harriman and to Medieval Fair and Pirate Fest. So that was a nice moment for us. Other things that we're doing is starting to work with the schools because the seventh graders study Middle Ages, and then also the theater, that'll be coming in as a guest speaker to the different schools down here in Rome County that have theater departments. And I've also started Storytime with Buccaneer Berry, where I read children's stories on Facebook at seven on Tuesday, and that way promotes Harriman and also promotes the family funding of the building. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you all do, and we look forward to the Pirate Fest.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council? Doc, we'll go into reports. Mary, you took the floor.
All right, not much to report this month. We are beginning to prepare for parade for Harriman and trunk or treat this fall. Looking forward to those events. Our old office building is nearly empty, so look forward to moving forward with that project. This month, we're going to be opening bids on Reeds Chapel Road water line replacement. We are working with the county, work around their project, complete that work. And then next month, we're going to be opening bids on gas line replacement project, actually our final phase of that work. Is there any questions for HEB?
Thank you all for all you do.
You all should have received, oh, I'm loud, you all should have received my stats for the month yesterday. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Do you have anything for the chief?
I would like to note our dog came back last Friday, and it's now working. We have our canine now on the street. This will be his first full week.
Came back to his home location?
Well, no, he's been in school.
Thank you, chief. Fire department?
Mayor, you guys received my monthly stats. The only other thing I would like to talk about, for the public to know and people to know on Facebook, we started our explorer post back a few months back. It starts age of 14 years of age. We have 10 kids at this time. We want more. So if you know any kids out there, it's going to be interesting being in emergency services, send them our way. We'd love to have them. We're trying to use this to be road mobs to these kids and keep them off the street, you know, keep them, you know, guide them the right way. So just want to give a small report on that, that's about it.
What's the age group?
Starts at the age of 14 years old and goes up to the age of 20.
Do you reach out to the schools?
Yes, we do. Yeah. That's where we snatched everyone up from, there at the high school and the middle school stuff. So I'll take any questions you got.
Thank you for the chief.
Yes, Mayor, we packed Burnham, Baumgardner, and State Street. Has potholes in there. Cut backs and valleys we're trying to cut as we get time. Clean some rightways around stop signs. Clean ditch on Circle Drive. I think Sam lives up there on Circle. We cleaned it, not for Sam. Got to clean it. Trim trees on Burke Street out in Wilder Hill. We got our two vans, and we're very appreciative of them. That's a big help for our end notes. I want to thank the council for providing that. We had a tree fall on Unica Street Alley Sunday night. Got it cleaned up. My boys are still mowing hard and weedy. Free cleanup starts the 12th. We've got an early start today, and we've already probably got a dumpster and a half, you know, it's been laying there about a month and a half. Looking back, dunks are running over. And I'd like to thank Mr. Ham and Mr. Hunt, they volunteered to be animal control for next Tuesday, so I want to thank them.
What's, can you, on the free cleanup? Yes. Kind of what are we doing to that? I mean, let people know what that is a little bit.
Well, what we're doing, we're getting everything like wood, old furniture, just nothing has with tires, we're not taking tires, paints, oil, we don't take that. I mean, we'd take oil if you bring it to the garage, we'd burn it and use it for hay. But really plastics, we're about anything.
What's the dates on that, Dr.?
Starts the 12th. We'll do that week, we'll run with the garbage crew, which we want to try to stay ahead a little bit, as bad as it is out there, and then the 19th. We'll run the garbage routes, and we're trying to get early start.
You pick it up at the houses or?
Yes, sir. Have it out on the? Have it out by your garbage jar beside the road. I'll do that. So 12th basically through the 19th, if we get it done by then.
We'll run two weeks, Mayor.
All right, two weeks. After the free cleanup is over, anything that we have to go back and pick up, it goes back to us charging. And if they throw it on the right away and they don't call it in, we're going to be knocking on the door.
So no matter what, whatever they put out there, you'll pick it up as long as just car or?
As long as it's not hazard.
Yeah.
So don't throw it out of the hazard, that way it's going to be land, huh?
We'll probably get yours anyway.
Everybody heard, if you're doing your fall cleanup, right now's the time to throw it out, we're going to pick it up for the next two weeks, and then after that, it goes back to us charging. We try to do this once a year, just to try to clean up Harriman. Me and Mr. Langley rode around today for about two hours, and there was a lot to pick up already, so if you're going back, like you said, that's already filled up, a couple of those big dumpsters, so there's a lot out there, but this is the time to get picked up if you want to pick it up.
Mr. Mayor, could I interject? Just so people have a little better idea, if you want to have their stuff out by, if your garbage is collected normally on Tuesday or Wednesday, you'll want to have it out by Monday the 12th. If your garbage is typically collected on Thursday or Friday, you'll want to have it out by Monday the 19th.
Have we posted that somewhere? Anybody have anything for Mr. Langley?
Thanks, sir.
Parks and Rec?
Really, I have one thing to announce. We've got the football jamboree this Saturday at 10 o'clock. It starts at 10 o'clock, and it's in Spring City for Harriman. So there'll be three teams playing. Our youngest, Crickets, Soppers, and the Cutters will play in order. Starts at 10 o'clock, second game at 11:30, probably the third one at 1:00. But that'll be down in Spring City. And then I don't have anything else from Parks and Rec right now.
Anybody have anything for Jacob on Parks and Rec? Golf course?
The golf course, we have a Henry Wright fundraiser. It's on August 24th, golf tournament, it's going to start at 9:00. And then our Labor Day Lights Out scramble, which was real popular last year, a lot of people just like to come out and watch it. We use the glow-in-the-dark balls. That'll be the Friday of Labor Day. I can't think what day it is off the top of my head, but it's Labor Day weekend, it's that Friday. If you want to come out and watch that, even if you don't play golf, it's pretty cool to see. I thought about like trying to see it from up top somewhere, maybe up near Dr. Curly's house or something. It looks pretty cool when it's dark. Can we come up there?
Yeah.
He's still just cooking out, come on up.
Come on, yeah, there we go. But other than that, that's really it for the golf course.
Anybody have anything for Jacob on the golf course?
Thanks, sir.
We just finished the summer reading program, and we had a big ice cream party last week. We had 152 children enrolled in our summer reading program, which actually, that number could be a lot more, just depending on which Wednesday it was. We had 107 at the finale, and we were real fortunate to begin this year with Earl Duff Subaru donating to the summer reading program. Actually, he donated $2,085. He, they gave away $600 in prizes, iPads, Kindles, and then with the TIN program of $100 was given, and it set for the first place in '75 and '35 and '25. So there was four winners with the TIN. He, the thing was universe of stories, so we were really blessed with his help there because usually we always pay speakers too, and so this helped us out tremendously. And Connie has also started an online story, so if you have children, you might want to check it out. It's on Tuesday. Go through her Facebook page. We've got a book sale the last two weeks of August. They'll be downstairs on the table in the children's department, Christian fiction, mystery, science fiction, large print, and nonfiction too, and children's books also. We have computer classes still going on. Actually, right now, we just finished with class on PowerPoint, and we will still have one on social media and website designs. There's several more if you want to come by and check it out. We have, it's in the paper too, as to when we are. And we have new books in, and hopefully they will be out for everybody soon. We are waiting to find out if we were able to get a grant again this year from the state, which helps us replace our computers and add them to the technology. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for Library?
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Curly?
Oh, we've been busy wrapping up all the things we need to do. Closed out FY, FY19. We put a contract in place for our annual audit, and we basically have worked with the police department on helping them get approved for share of revenue for the coming years. And working on both. We had several iterations on both addition calls, so it's a busy time of year. We're kind of waiting on go right now until we get the final tax rate, which we know it's going to be, but until you do final reading, I can't send it to Nashville. But once it, once we send it to Nashville, it will kick in all the processes required to get the mailings. And the people who do our mailouts have the form in place, ready to go, once we get the file in place.
Dr. Curly?
Yes. Could you briefly explain a little bit about that tax, midtown tax thing?
Well, yes, I can. It might not be brief. Basically, what happened was, we did not claim any property, as was indicated in the newspaper. We basically don't go through that process, so whoever wrote it didn't understand the process we go through with respect to the sales tax that we get. Basically, what happened is, if you have a business that you determine is located in another jurisdiction, say outside of Harriman, and for some reason, the state has put that in the city of Harriman, then there's a communication that takes place between all parties. Basically, the city is invited by letter by the Department of Revenue to review what is being proposed. The other party is review what is being proposed, and if all is in agreement, then they move the business into the jurisdiction it belongs in. But they do not do it before all parties get involved in decision making. What actually happened was, Department of Revenue made a mistake this year. In three months, they assigned some of that, i.e. businesses' revenue, to the city of Harriman. It was a mistake, but it had nothing to do with us. And so they're correcting it now, and my information I get today from Nashville is that we will have an adjustment of $14,000. And that's basically will be the amount that for March, April, and May, that they mistakenly put in our allocation of local office stuff tax. I was a little puzzled by what was in the newspaper because it was not standard practice at all, and clearly it was not well-written. It's all my comment, got to make about it.
Yeah, I was puzzled, me too. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any other questions, Dr. Curly? Thanks, sir. City attorney?
Since my last report to council, I've closed what we've been calling the Pinnacle Point cases. When those cases were initiated in 2013 or '14, the city had paid some money into funds at the court clerk's office, and that money was released to the court. And so between the two cases, it was $29,000 returned to the city. And so otherwise, that's been entered with the court. That mediated agreement is part of the court record, it's enforceable. And then I also have multiple property maintenance cases that code enforcement has brought to my attention to move forward on those, initiating court cases on more of those issues. And then we have three that we settled the last couple of months.
Anybody have anything for the city attorney?
Thank you, ma'am.
City attorney, Ms. Brown?
Yesterday, I spent about five hours touring FEMA around the city to look at the areas that sustained flood damage for city infrastructure during the February flood. I realize now why it took so long for them to get down here to look at it. It took four people to come down and look at each site and fill out the paperwork from FEMA, so it was close to a day-long exercise. That paperwork will go in, and then the main office will make a determination on what's eligible for reimbursement and what is not, as well as, in some cases, we ask for mitigation, which basically is a request to not just put the conditions back to pre-flood condition, but to improve it in some way as to try and prevent this from occurring again in the future. So they'll review both of those separately, and we could be funded for one or both. They did look at several sites at Riverfront Park, and those that were down here were unsure as to how the main office would look at that, so we'll be waiting to see what kind of ruling that they give us on the work there at the park. We've been making good progress at the trailhead since we've been staffing down on a regular basis and getting the rooms upstairs prepared to relocate the history museum over into that area, and so that's moving along at a much better pace than it has been over the last few weeks. I've got a printed copy here for you. I did also include this in a email that I sent out to you last week, but this is a program that we're using here in the office now to track our major projects. Basically, once we are able to identify the steps and estimate some timelines for when certain things should occur in a project, we will enter it into the computer, assign a person to be responsible for it, and then we can track it through this process. The one that you have here in front of you is for the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, which would be to replace sidewalks, improve ADA compliance, and replace the lighting along Rome Street, north of our facility here. So you kind of see from surveying, which began about a week and a half ago, forward to when we would estimate that the design would be complete. And then at that point, we would hope to go to construction. We also have a kickoff meeting scheduled for August 22nd for the LPRF grant with the engineer and the grant administrator, and we would anticipate, once that meeting is complete, having a similar flow chart for that project as we have for this one, because this one was developed right after the kickoff meeting for this particular grant. You'll see additional ones in the future as we start to work on other grants and other major projects as well. But we'll try and periodically update these for you, but if you ever want a picture of where we're at with one of these projects, you know, we can produce that for you at any time, whether we've got it pre-prepared or not. That's all I have, and I'll take questions.
Questions for Ms. Brown? Any other committees or reports after anybody wants to address council? All right, we'll go into new business. First, I'm discussing possibly approve first reading of ordinance 0819-01. An ordinance entitled, and ordinance amending, our ordinance number 0818-01, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the city of Harriman, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. Motion to approve? No. Second? We'll go into discussion. Dr. Curly, you want to read the order?
Yes. Recall, this is an amendment that basically what we do each year when we have line item overruns, we basically amend the budget so that we can take funds from line items that did not overrun and reelect them to line items to cover any overages in other line items. So this will kind of wrap up and end the FY budgeting process by amending the budget to take care of those overruns. Says, whereas subsequent to the adoption of the aforementioned ordinance number 0818-01 on final reading on the 4th day of September, 2018, certain changes- on final reading on the fourth day of September 2018, certain changes have occurred in the revenue and expenditures of the city of Harriman, and it has become necessary to amend ordinance number 0818-01 to appropriate the additional revenue which has been received and/or authorized expenditures in certain accounts. Whereas said revisions can be made in budget ordinance number 0818-01 without encouraging additional obligations, therefore, or requiring additional emergency tax levy to cover them, now therefore being enacted by the city council of Harriman, Tennessee, as follows. Section 1, that the budget ordinance of 0818-01 is amended in the following particulars. Funds of the city budget are to be amended and increased, as shown in the following expenditure and revenue accounts. General Fund 110, the total amount to be increased is $233,479.73. For the State Street Aid Fund, the amount to be increased is $19,364.74. For the Solid Waste Management Fund, the amount to be increased is $36,837.57. For the Capital Project Fund, the amount to be increased is $153.73. For the Drug Fund, the amount to be increased is $70,267.85. To offset those overages, we are allocating funds, uh, from other line items and, uh, the funds of the city budget are to be amended and decreased, as shown in the following expenditure accounts. General Fund 110, the total amount to be, uh, decreased, $233,479.73. State Street Aid Fund, $19,364.74. Solid Waste Management Fund, um, and the, uh, capital lease issued under the, under that fund, total amount is $36,837.57. Capital Project Fund, $153.73. Drug Fund, uh, total of $17,267.85. Uh, basically, section 2 says it's unlawful for the mayor or the city council, uh, who have control of the funds to overspend or in any way disperse said funds other than set forth in a budget ordinance. Section 3, uh, any portion that's declared invalid shall not affect the other parts, and be further enacted that this ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage and publication of public welfare requiring it. There's a line for first reading, a line for second reading, a line for approval by Wayne Best, Mayor, and a line for testing by Teresa Beer, the city clerk.
Floor is open for discussion. Thanks, sir, for reading that. Charles.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Monty Graham?
Yes. Motion's approved. Next item, discuss and possibly approve a waiver to the personnel policy for the hiring of Parks and Rec director.
Motion.
motion by Councilman Russell.
I second it.
So, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell. Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Hold it away.
Yeah, hold it away. Essentially, uh, what we're, uh, requesting, um, and I believe also this is in conjunction with the, uh, recommendation of the recreation committee, is to, uh, be able to, uh, expedite the, uh, hiring process so that we can get someone into the, uh, position as quickly as possible.
So Wesley, uh, you all are given the city manager permission to live in the hiring process and have somebody to watch you there.
I mean, I don't have a problem. I just didn't, well, the personnel policy says you can't, it's hired tomorrow. The personnel policy, uh, basically there's a statement outlining the duration of time that we're, uh, supposed to take applications, um, after notice is given. We have, we have actually received several applications, um, but we have not done a printed notice at this point, so this will be, um, allowing us to move past that point.
Can we do that?
The, um, council, uh, was the one that adopted the personnel policy, and so, um, my opinion that the council would be the one who would have the authority to grant a waiver for that policy.
I would think so, um, unless there's another specific provision in the personnel policy for how to waive it. I'm not sure I'll hand that out in front of you, but I wouldn't oppose the council making a waiver to their own policy.
And this is a recommendation that they let me? Any other questions? Follow-up please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Monty Graham?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve board appointment to the Harriman Housing Authority. I'd like to recommend to the council, uh, Dominique Borum. Uh, she lives here on Devonius Street. She's a teacher out of Bowers, and, uh, I have had, uh, Ms. Hall, which is the executive director to Harriman Housing, uh, talk to her, and, uh, I think she'd be a good asset to be housing for.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell?
I second it.
So, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Follow-up please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Monty Graham?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, can I get a motion to waive the gender rule to add a, uh, piece of equipment to the surplus that we're selling?
Motion.
Motion by, Councilman Meade, second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Holly, Councilman Meade. Councilman Holly, please. Floor is open for discussion.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Monty Graham?
Yes. Uh, what, uh, the 1998 Ford van, blue one that the street department was using for so long, uh, is about seeing its last part of life. They're setting out back out here, they'd like to add it to the surplus that we already have, uh, while we're doing this surplus at this point in time. So, I mean, a motion to surplus off the blue van, 98 Ford.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Wright, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wright.
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Follow-up please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Monty Graham?
Yes. Motion carries. This time here from council. Uh, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Russell?
Friday nights on Rome, this Friday. Got a concert downtown at the same time. It's all happening.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Councilman Holly?
I think in the future, I'd like to see us reconsider the city hall. Oh, yeah. We've been looking at.
Councilman Meade?
Uh, the 98 van should sell good. That's championship year, so anybody wants to bid on it, paint it up, fix it back?
This may get them in a bit.
Kevin might want to buy?
It's lacking a wing bone. Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, as Sam said, Friday nights on Rome is this Friday night. Uh, also, there's a meeting here tomorrow at 5 o'clock for anybody that wants to come. Uh, we are starting to meet on the, uh, trunk-or-treat, the Labor Day Festival, uh, and the declarations of Harriman for, uh, the fall. So that'll be here at City Hall tomorrow at 5 o'clock for anybody that wants to come. Anything else need to come for this council?